This special session of the Lincoln County Commission on the Holwick III, 2011, 6:10 is now called to order. Members Presidents Donald Sidgeway-Clark, Charles McCann-Presley, Thomas Ramey-Commissioner, and Charles Lance-Commissioner via telephone.
Are you still there, Dr. Vance? All right. We'll begin the meeting first with announcing that Jo Von, this shortly ago we found out on the phone, she would not be able to attend the seating. She is still involved in the districting. It happens also. We'll still go through the meeting as we did before. We just will have her expertise. We'll try to do the best we can from what we learned from her last time. And for something that would come up that is concerned, if we can't fully answer or whatever, we'd be glad to take that and get with her and get back to an answer too some. But basically, the format will be the same. We're having these as an informational to help us, help the public as to what is taking place. It's a first for us sitting here as commissioners. Another three of us have dealt with it before. So we just felt like this would be a good way of trying to learn as we go and give people a chance to help us through this process and get involved in the process. We put on the agenda again this week that we would certainly take all the comments here this evening within a five-minute period, but it needs to be more than that. We certainly not want to close it down if it's something worthwhile. Needs to be said and for something that you need to address in writing that still is the intent of this group is to present your information in writing and raise your questions or issues, make your statements, and we will address those. This will be the last input session for the magisterial district issues. And it'll be my intent with the responsibility that the commission has given me to work through this will be to, at the conclusion of this meeting, look at the possibility of taking what has been said, what we have learned working with Jo Von, come up with a plan and present that to the public. Here will be our plan. And as I understand it, and find out otherwise, certainly will do that, where the law says. But as I understand it now, that the plan should be approved by the commission and then put on a thirty-day public review. And at that time, the plan will be officially adopted after a thirty-day public period of review. Excuse me. So at this time, we'll begin the meeting with providing comments. I apologize. I'm actually a little foggy. So as you want, how you want to do it, raise your hand if you recognize however, but we'll be glad to address any issues that you have, or you may address us however you want to come.
What is the source of the map that Jo Von was used at the meeting last week?
I don't know the source of it. She brought it with her and gave it to us.
So it's from the...
It's from Jo Von. It's her generated map.
Can you all use the mic? Because we can't hear his voice very well.
We don't have a mic. We do not have a mic.
Those are not mics that...
It's just a recorder.
Right. And the map in question?
Yes.
The numbers on the map are the most recent census numbers. In regards to the map itself, as Commissioner President said, it's just a map that Jo Von accumulated from her office.
So Jo Von did that map?
Yes.
Okay. Because you were not sent, the county was not sent this decertified map with the eight districts. That was not... Because this is the 2010 map that I have that does not coincide with that one. Here's the 2010 voting district map that you're welcome to. Here are these eight pages of changes that have happened since 1975 for counties from all across the states. And I guess I'm challenging the constitution now, the idea of this whole thing, because we had ample time in three decades to have corrected anything that they did in 1986. Because when I put deployed information from regional, I have a disk that has letters that had gone back from the county, signed by Greg Stowers right on through. Even one was verbal. Judy gave them information. Terry somebody signed two. Alan Holder signed two, stating, certifying these maps, the one you're looking at with eight districts, that we had no changes. So I said that we do. I understand we're beginning to clean it up, but I think we have a problem here because you look at the Supreme Court case that was just decided. That was very explicit that you had six numerical districts. So what's right? Six numerical districts for the named districts that we have on there. So you can understand why the citizens of Lincoln County had problems.
Can I speak to this?
If it really is pertinent to what we're here for...
I would just remind those in attendance that at the last meeting with Jo Von was the evidence that she made clear that many counties of this state, the maps that are on file do not have the correct number of magisterial districts. And just because the maps on file in her office do not reflect the correct number does not mean that the correct number is not a legal number.
But there was a Supreme Court case that you yourself said decided that. So then I would question, why do we not have six numerical districts there that we, even the boundary, if you take the boundary descriptions from that, does not coincide with that? So I would just like it to go on record that I constitutionally asked for this.
Well, and I think that's proper. It's been noted that there's an issue raised about how things have been done in the past and where we are today, and that it's in the record. And at this point, I feel that we need to move on and take additional comments of what we're here for, and that is to take the census data that has been given for 2010 and look at that, how it needs to be properly put into magisterial districts within that 5% variance, so.
Mr. McCann?
Yes.
The map that Ms. Von gave out the last time, now this is the existing map. This is not any proposed changes. This is what she's separating.
No, no. What she gave for talking points, as I understood, shows the, as I remember, it says, here's the population and dotted lines shows the precincts, but even though we found that we're at Arizona. So what we will do is, as actually we leave here tonight, my plan is to meet with her on behalf of the commission and talk about the issues that's been brought up and ask her to put something together that I can bring back to the commission that will say, here is the new 2010 census data, and here's how it needs to be in order to stay within the 5% of equality.
Reason I raise this is because I've looked at the old eight district configurations in the county, and as you all have said many times, you know, Union and Jefferson were merged into Duval district.
Not completely.
Correct me if I didn't...
Well, they, some, I think that, and I just, I'm thinking that part of it actually went over into, maybe some of it went into another district, not all of it went into Duval, don't think.
Well, that's why, that's the reason I'm seeking clarification, because when I look at just the shape of this portion of Sheridan, I guess would be the other one you're referring to, when I look at the shape of the maps that Ms. Von gave out here, I mean, it's identical or pretty close of the shape of the old Union district.
Union was put into Sheridan and Jefferson was moved into Duval.
Okay. Okay, that's...
Totally.
Totally.
Totally. Okay, that's...
Yeah, see, I've got that general office I have.
See, I always hear that. That was mine earlier, and I'm glad to clarify, because I always was under the assumption that they had both been moved into Duval district.
Well, when I looked at it, I thought that it was back to the eight when I first looked at it.
Well, I mean, but I'm assuming that, you know, that there are six based on what they actually...
That's what the courts have ruled.
Well, that's one, and based on what you all said, I mean, I know there's some concern and maybe someone, everyone does feel that way, but if there were, or if there are six, all I would just, I just couldn't understand Union, but if, if in the eighties, the commission actually placed Union into Sheridan, then that makes sense.
And that's what we did.
Okay.
Jefferson, Duval, six, Jefferson, Duval.
Oh, that's all.
Now, that's, I appreciate that.
Other comments or questions?
I guess I have a question about process, Charles. I know you said you're going to meet with Ms. Von after, just, I guess sometime in the future.
Sometime between now and the near future.
Okay.
But we got a timeline from, if we want to get this project moving and address some of the issues that's been brought up about voting precincts and some of that thing, just look at those, then we have to start December 30th to 11th and count back in order to get all these things done. But of course, there is a thirty-day review that has to be, if you're going to change the precincts, a sixty-day period of trying to get things done before the next election. So that's the kind of thing I have to leave here. My thing is to get with her and say, now, here's what we want to work on, help me work through the timeframes and make this happen. And we've had some discussion on that already, and I'll talk about that at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, I was just thinking, I was, I watched the videos, and I was thinking, if I were her and trying to work through this process, the recent decisions I have to make first. Number one is, how many districts are we going to have? That's the first decision to me. So who's going to decide that?
The commission.
The commission. Okay, you'll decide how many districts there'll be, and then you'll divide the precincts in some kind of equitable manner within this distribution ratio.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And precincts, they changed the rules on that from the time of the double before, as far as allowing you to have a larger number of people in a precinct than you presently have.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that on the tape.
And that is something that I want to look at, because if we can have a larger number of people in one voting area, then, I'm not sure, true is my opinion that we could have maybe, pick our best skilled people to run the elections that can operate the machines and enjoy it, though that we might be able to, be able to get more people in one site to vote rather than having everywhere, as long as it's not an inconvenience. I remember Ms. Von said, try to keep it as convenient as possible. And that's one of the things that I want to talk to her about.
Right. I think, as she said, that I noticed in that tape, she said that several times.
Yeah.
She wanted not to be, you know, she wanted that convenience to the voters so that more people would vote, and also handicapped accessible and some other things that were brought up. But that's going to be quite a merging job, isn't it?
Well, it's a challenge.
It'll be a challenge.
But from what I desire again is to us do the best we can and as workable as we can, but us get it done within a timeframe, so.
So you would come back with a, I'm not over my five minutes, am I?
I don't want anybody talking. I just say that as a guidance basis.
Okay, so you and Ms. Von will come up with some kind of a draft plan?
That's my plan. My, my goal, I, at the end, you may keep, that's the same thing, Tim.
Sorry.
My plan was, actually, here, the comment was basically say, my job now of carrying out my responsibility that the other commissioners have given me is to meet with her and say, here's some of the comments we've had, you've heard some of them, here may be some additional ones, because we will look at those and help to look at two or three scenarios, how we might be able to put Lincoln County first, looking at not the voter part, but at the magisterial districts. Is it possible to do this and stay with the six, or should we decrease? We heard some discussion last week that maybe you had to have at least three, but no more than maybe, I don't want that number was eight maybe. But I want to talk to her in those terms and see what we can do about that. With the recent election, last election, with the issues that came up, I guess my thoughts are that if you had three districts, three magisterial districts, then that would not have been a, such an issue, because we still had this issue of where people live and they could be represented in a magisterial district, so that's one question that we'll be certainly giving her.
So any way you cut the pie, you're going to have...
Some ways.
Some area, with some people, I mean, it's just...
It's just like when you went from eight to six.
Right.
So I'm going to start and talk to her in those terms, see what she tells me. That's one of the things I do have in mind.
There's going to be boundaries here.
Yes. And a few boundaries that can be, one of the things that Tim asked last time was, was trying not to have districts interrupt voting districts, not magisterial, the voting districts. And certainly, I've got notes to talk to her about that, how we might be able to approach that if we, I'm not sure which one comes first, but...
My question too to her would have been, if you're going to decide this and make a plan, what is your prioritized criteria?
Yeah.
What comes first?
Yeah.
What comes next consideration? Because you have to have a method or you don't have nothing.
Well, that's something that she'd been here, not I had planned to ask, but I, after listening last week, I tried to digest what was said, stat people and her.
Okay. Then you'll come back with this plan, and it'll be on public review for thirty days?
The way I understand it is that the plan will be submitted to the commission, and they have to agree to the plan that she and I developed on behalf of the commission. And then if they vote to accept that plan, and then the clock ticks for thirty days for public review, and that plan will be publicly noticed, that the plan is there and will be on the, in the courthouse. You can come and read it, and look at it, and get copies of it, whatever. It has to be on public review for thirty days.
And will you take suggestions for any kind of alterations or additions or whatever during that thirty days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's possible to be amended within those thirty days?
I don't know that yet.
You don't know that it's possible?
I don't know. I haven't asked her that question.
Oh, okay.
I just, I'm really depending on her pretty avid on those kind of guidance. But I'm assuming that if you change it drastically, you may start the clock ticking again. I don't know, but that's something she could tell me, I'm sure.
Well, I know, I thought putting something on public review gave the public time to review it and to give you input on it.
I don't...
I mean, that's, it's what my idea was, a public review, but I have such wrong.
Well, it seemed like when I read the code, it says, it's sole responsibility of the county commission to develop the plan, where you even have input or not, but you do have to have the public, say, here's what it is. It doesn't say what you got to do about that.
Just a point of information, Mr. Pre, I noticed in the, a public notice in the Gazette where the Canola County Commission had four plans that were on public review, and I think maybe this week they were having a meeting, it was online so people could see their various options, so that they could make comments pertaining to their four options.
And that may be what she told me. I don't know, because she's doing Canolas too.
I wish.
And Putman's, two, three others.
Well, we, at what point, we, you come and say, after the review's over, do you have a time set? Will that mean that you're going to finalize it, the final day?
That'll be in the, I would assume that, that that would be in the notice, say, here's the plan, and it's on this thirty days, and at the end of that, there'll be another commission meeting, doing the vote for men or whatever. That's how I envision it anyway. Yes, Mr. Vance?
When the so-called pie is cut, would it be acceptable to drop names and use numbers only?
That's, that's been a suggestion, and some counties do that. You know, because it keeps the confusion maybe down from what was happening in the past, referring to something as a, as a place, and it maybe doesn't exist now or something. So, yes. Matter of fact, Canola County has theirs in numbers. When I talked to them, apparently they have four, four magisterial districts. Yes.
What is the minimum and what is the maximum number of magisterial districts Lincoln County can have?
I think three is the minimum, and I think they told us for eight, or something like that, correct? Yeah, I asked that question to her. Well, it could be, I...
And is that based on population or each county making their own decision?
Now, I think that's the law, my thing. I think it's in the code. I think I had to hear last week, I don't have a...
It's related to the number of commissioners you have. They haven't, they have to have at least three commissioners.
I couldn't hear him, what did he say?
Repeat that again if you wouldn't, Mr. Vance.
They have to have at least three districts because you have three commissioners.
Yeah, yeah, that was one of the issues. The minimum is because of three commissioners, and same way with school board, you can't have more than two out of one, one district, so you got to have at least three in order to have that representation. But I don't know about the high number. There is a number in those states, I think. I thought maybe ten, but there is a limit.
Well, with the higher amount, you're thinking that way you could have more commissioners to have a better equal representation of different areas of the county. So that would be something I would, that wouldn't need to be considered if possible.
Yeah.
So...
I know, Canola, I was surprised, I think they have four magisterial districts with the population they have, but they still have three county commissioners, but they have four magisterial districts.
The vast majority of counties have three. Thirty-six, if I remember correctly, seven thirty. And most of our neighbors have three.
Do you know how many cattle they have?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
I have the best theory.
Well, with this being, you know, a new redistricting and a new era, and, you know, I just think maybe that would give the people of the county something to be proud of and maybe feel like they get heard more. So I think it should be considered if possible.
Well, I think everything has to be considered. It seemed to me like that what I hear more than anything is some of the voting precincts, more so than magisterial, the voting precincts, when they did the other in eighty-five or eighty-three, that they changed a lot of the voting precincts thereafter, and it strung them out in different places, different parts that, you know, located, one side of the highway might be one, another, or a river, or whatever. And I think we'll look at that, what we come up with, I think that has to be addressed. It doesn't have to be this time. It could be done this time. You could address the voting in other times too, but, but you, this would be a good time to do it, I think.
Just so I understand, Lisa, are you saying that we should expand to more districts so that people have more representation, or?
No, I was just asking if, was there a reason why we only just had three district, you know, three county commissioners?
Oh, three county.
Because I would just think, you know, with this being a rural county, spread out, and, you know, my area's different than this area, and that, you know, people would, it would maybe be better for all the people in the county to have more representation on the county commission level, you know, from different areas. And in this sense, we're doing this redistricting, you know, maybe we should look at that issue.
I think the legal, legal limit is five that you could have, but you have to pass a...
Has to be a deal, I'm sure. You have to walk...
Legislative action for us to receive more than three commissioners.
I think there's two, maybe, I know there's one county, Jefferson, has five.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just wondered, I didn't know if that was based on population.
I think that people have, I think Jefferson, and Judy said, thought Berkeley, I know Jefferson has for a long time, and somebody else tried it a couple of years back, and it didn't work, so, but most, almost all of them are just three. Jefferson definitely is a five county, and maybe Berkeley may be now.
And again, Mr. Kemp, when you're talking about the annual slice of pie up there, again, you know, this law will, I'm sure, and you're familiar with it, having flow out of one end to the other one and back into it. Those are the things, you know, you hear a lot of people, you know, talking about it here in Lincoln County. And I was going to ask, Thomas, you said you've seen these others with three. Have you kind of looked at how they're laid out as far as, you know, are they all encompassed, you know, the three, or have you seen any of them?
What I did was I went through the blue book, which gives you the information for each county, and I wanted to see exactly how many counties had three, four, five, and just to see where most counties stood in terms of the number of magisterial districts that they didn't have maps. I wasn't able to see how they were laid out geographically.
Yeah. Because it's, it's hard to answer questions, people, you know, we've got a lot of people that pass voting precincts to get to their precinct, and, you know, we all know that's...
Yeah, and that's the thing, probably I hear more about that than anything else.
Yes.
And we will definitely, we talk to her about that and bring that back to the commission to be talking about as soon as I get information.
And I'd like to ask what the commission, where you're at now as far as your thinking on this. I know you all have talked about this problem, and your ideas maybe, can you share those?
We have talked a little, we've talked very little, but we have talked, but I really think the commission, if want me to get out there and try to get most of it done, then they could say, well, that was a recommendation from the county commission. I don't know. I'm just kidding, really. But they have asked me to do it, and I haven't had a whole lot of input, but I've had some. I've asked them for their ideas, and, but I don't think anybody's got any definite answers. I think if you come up with something that makes sense and will work, and us talk about it, but it's been hard to get Jo Von really focused as much as it liked to, as quickly as it liked to anyway, but I hope that this, after this week, she'll be more agree.
And if we did say this, if we went to three, are we still looking at keeping the same amount of committee people?
Yes.
I mean, that is something...
Yes, that's something we think, we had talked about that, and Jo Von, I asked her specifically about that, and that's not an issue. She said, matter of fact, if you needed to, you felt, if you needed to, you could actually increase it, but right now, you could definitely keep the six committees, six Democrats, six Republicans, committee, man and woman, so you could have the same as you've got now, twelve and twelve. I think, yeah, I don't see that as anything that's an issue. I see that needing to be reaffirmed and tell people, this is the way it is, and this is why it's that way, in order to keep people locally involved. The only thing I have thought about is, is trying to figure out how to make voting easier and not get it out of reach of people, but still try to get, I guess in some cases, when I've looked at it, I've tried to think, is it necessary to have this precinct versus another precinct? And if you keep that small precinct, how do you justify it? Or could it be fused in another? And I've found some, and I think, well, I think the fusion could be in some larger precincts and keep maybe some of the little outlying area precincts in order to accommodate people. There's one that I won't discuss here name-wise, which probably, you probably know, there's one probably in the county that it's hard to justify, but I'm not sure what my recommendation may be, but others, I don't see a problem trying to keep. There's an issue like on Big Ugly. When they did the change before, they took, they left part of the people who live on Big Ugly voting at the old Big Ugly School. Well, on the other side of the creek, Big Ugly Creek, they have to come over to Furlsburg. By knowing that area so well, that doesn't make sense to me. So I know that's one issue that... By knowing that area so well, that doesn't make sense to me. So I know that's one issue that needs to be looked at. The one that Mr. Priestley mentioned in the last meeting, stretching all the way down the river, that needs to be looked at. I don't want it to be done, but it needs to come on. That's one of the items I have down to talk about. There may be others that people bring to the attention, but I know that's some of the issues. And of course, see what she says, see what, you know, Joe Vaughn says, but that's how I see it. It may be, it's like Garrett's Bend, it's a small precinct, but it covers a lot of miles. And if you, it might be cheaper, if you look at that part of, to have them go to Midway, or to McCorville, or down to Dewall. But it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. If we can figure out what to keep it like it is, and figure out some way to, one of the things I know that exists is there's people who live in the present Garrett's Bend voting precinct that are registered outside of it, down to Dewall, somewhere else. Well, somewhere, what I want to be able to do is get with Christie, who works in Donald's office, and see if there's some way we can bring that all back to Garrett's Bend, and make it just a little bit, make it a little bit bigger, but it might make it easier on the people. They might be closer to their own community. And of course, here in Hamlin, I'm not really looking at it for myself, and that's what you asked for, in my opinion. I can't see why we vote all, keep precincts out at the elementary school, fire department, old bus garage in here. I couldn't see why we couldn't have a big precinct in the gymnasium at the middle school, have a ten-member board or whatever, have a double board, and vote them all there. Those are the kind of things that I think need to be looked at. Why have all these different places operate? If we could do that and have less people, we might be able to pay people more to work. That's where I'm headed, so.
And Steve mentioned, again, I was taking a four mile is a nightmare.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, there's people go to Ranger off four mile, there's people go to Barantula, and there's people go to Pleasant View. I know one family up there, in the same house, they go in different directions to vote.
I didn't know that. I know.
But, you know, it's, it's really messy.
Well, and some of it, I think we can correct. Some of the people get registered in the wrong place and don't want to change. But my desire will be to come with something that is better than what we got, for sure, and offer that to the other commissioners, and take any input from them before I go sit down and talk with her. But I do plan on meeting with her as soon as she will agree to meet, hopefully next week.
And the only other thing I want to say, you know about the house up there where they vote? Numerous people I've run into will not go vote just for that reason.
That's what I mentioned a while ago. I didn't want to really get into.
Well, I mean, there it is.
I understand. I understand that well.
Well, good. I'm glad you did.
A lot of people have brought that to my attention. Ain't that many people vote there, but I hear a lot.
They just, I'm not going to go in someone's house and vote.
Well, and, you know, I can, that's my first comment when I brought to mind it, and I said, you know, with people's, we don't get along too well in families, and you definitely don't get along sometimes with neighbors. You've got to go to that one house to vote.
There you go.
Doesn't work.
And just so you're aware.
We can fix that.
And I'm sure Commissioner Vance will agree. While we did vote to give Commissioner McCann authority to work with Joe Vaughn, we don't feel it's our job to stand back and let him just take the lead and do everything on his own. As we hear people complain, Big Ugly, Four Mile, Red River, all across the county, spoken to people, got their complaints, I give the feedback back to the commission president, so he can give the information to Joe Vaughn. And I think that us giving him the information, allowing Joe Vaughn to pull the numbers together, and really, outside of the magisterial district changes, I think the precinct changes could make the biggest difference. I think that as, as elections go on, year after year, we see the numbers go down, less and less people participate. And I think it's because people are distant branchouts. I know the people on Big Ugly feel like they're not going to vote if they have to drive to Furlsbury. Like was already stated, people on Four Mile, Red River, on and on and on. So it's our duty, if this time is possible, to clean those precincts up. And the overarching issue, the magisterial district problem or solution that we come up with, will fit into how we fix the precinct problems.
And we can come back and address precinct problems, but we cannot come back and address the magisterial. So magisterial, we are for the next ten years, but I think, I don't see that as being as tough an issue as the precinct issue.
Who is actually going to sit down, and again, let's just say we're going to three, just to talk. Who's going to sit down to draw these lines and say?
Joe Vaughn has a program about computerization that she can do that. And she shows us a little bit about that, and assures me that we just got to tell her, because you've got to get the numbers right.
Yes.
And within that five percent range. And she says, you tell me the numbers, and I can give you a scenario of three, I can give you one of four, I can give you one of five, and show you those, where the, how it can be done. And some of it will make sense, some may not, but it can be done, so. And that's where I'll go with her, with whatever information I have.
Her technology, not only she can use rivers, streams, roads, she can use ridge lines. It's the most up-to-date technology. That's what she's using to help with the redistricting at the state level.
In the eighty-three, they, when they, they hired a guy to go out and survey all this. And basically, when you read that, it's like thirty-seven pages of survey, where he went out and said, this is where the boundary lines are, and where the break, but basically, a lot of it was still branches, and ridges, and roads, and rivers. But he had to go out and actually look at those and do that. Now, it can be done with, you know, GPS and computers. We're open to it, well as she says it.
Can I ask, well, Kirk, talk me back to committee people again. I'll use David's theoretical there that we have three. So let's assume the lack of, something as an example, that two existing are formed together. I'm trying to figure out, if you're going to stay with the same number of committee people, would they come from, let's say, two get merged, just for something to think about. Would those committee people, you know, would one come from, male and female come from each one, or would they just two come from that big new district?
Well, I think what, what a discussion that we've had is that we'd go to the number system for magisterial districts, have one, two, three. And as to the precincts, in order to have these sub-districts out there, if what you call them, or whatever, then you'd have to establish those as, just like they are now, you may call them something else, instead of having it as the Laurel Hill. Or it may be a sub-number or something, and that would coincide with what you have now, in order to guarantee that, that existence out there. You have to have something that defines that.
I'm just trying to see whether or not, in this scenario, that you would have two people that could be in close proximity, both in, in meet the two committee men, let's say, for that area, or would it say, no, wait, you're talking, you know, based on those voting precincts. But no, one of them will have to come from this section of this new big precinct, and the other would have to come from another part of it. Does that make sense?
I understand. Yeah, I understand.
I asked her that specific question. She told me she was almost sure they would have to come from the different sub-districts. So they wouldn't be running against each other. They would just be on the ballot in that particular sub-district.
I think it's about that.
Yeah, I think she referred to it as a division stage.
Yes, just the same idea of having representation from different segments of the.
Right, and you definitely don't want to lose that.
How many zip codes do we have in Lincoln County?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I think those kind of issues is what we need to hear about, because I think that's where the real decisions will have to be made, how you do that. And don't get too far away from where we're at now when it comes to that, because if you can come up with something and people understand, they feel like it's workable, then that's the way to do it. And I don't know what the answer is, but I think these kind of meetings helps us reach the decisions, how to go about that. And you may think of something when you get home, and send me some notes, send the commission notes to whatever, that this is what you think might work, because that's what we're looking for. I don't think the magisterial part is as hard as the precinct part and those kinds of things. Was somebody else raised, and sure.
Yeah, if it would be feasible, I'd like to see precinct twenty-six move to Sheridan.
Precinct twenty-six.
Twenty-six from Laurel Hill, very Pleasant View, because a lot of people pass by, we have a lot of problems with that. See, because we got, Sheridan District's got twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. And we passed twenty-six out. There, yeah, Pleasant View. I mean, I've had a lot of problems with that, and, you know, over the years.
Were you saying encompassing Laurel Hill part?
Yeah, into Sheridan.
Or is twenty-six at?
Pleasant View.
At Pleasant View.
Yeah.
They voted to high school.
Yeah.
See, and that's right down the road.
Yeah.
The numbers game.
Yeah.
Well, and, you know, like a Guyanese Valley, if you could make the Guyanese Valley Gymnasium a vote center, you could probably combine a lot of those precincts from Branson and Pleasant View into one place there.
That's what I've, yeah, I've thought that, thank you.
Because right now, I guess, you know, the concern that I see with what the, we've got going on out at Harts, is that you're going to be, the Furlsbury School closed, you're going to close the middle school, you're going to close Atonville. Those are all voting precincts. My suggestion may be that we put all those in a new middle school. Why have them out here? Why not bring them all to the new middle school and have them set up where people have their vote there? You used to have a ten-member board and not have all these other precincts. They're within a mile of one another anyway.
That's a lot of money, too.
Well, it would, but that's the kind of thing that I think needs to be brought to the table, and then meet with the school board, the superintendent, and say, would you be willing to work with us on that? Because they may not want to see the new school building. I don't know. But it would be, to me, you're going to have, you know, down at Atonville, you're going to have a big old building there, it's going to be empty. Somewhere they need to vote. You can't just expect to keep that building open to vote. So we need to look at moving it up, same way as the middle school parts, and Furlsbury's already in the community center. So my thought was, well, why not put them all down to the new school? It'd save money and have it more efficient. But that's something I don't know yet. That's a thought certainly in my notes. And try to do that across the whole county is what I'm trying to. Yes?
One of the things we run into when we do have the voting precincts in the buildings that are no longer schools is the lack of phone service. You can't get a hold of anybody, or, you know, the phone's locked up in a ring down the hall, you know, so, or, so that, 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 that would be a good point to move it to.
I first thought, but I'm not sure, you know, but I do have that down as a consideration. And just like we mentioned about Hamlin a while ago, I think, you know, it could be done, because they're coming within this whole block of anywhere that you're going to vote. So why not have a big board and have everybody in one place?
Or the new school or something, yeah, possibly. It could be different. More parking there.
But that's the kind of thing that I think must, something gets closer than you're talking about, you know, put this out and get any additional feedback. I think that's what we need to listen well and try to do the best we can.
Do you all plan on having any meetings after you meet with Joe Vaughn, and after you all have a meeting, and you put it in the public forum?
I had not planned on it, no. I just don't, I'm not sure we've got enough time to do all that. I keep saying we can still address the voting. If we don't get it right this time, we can still do that in the off-year election coming up. But the magisterial was need to get hit, and then we need to do the best we can with the voting. But if we don't get it right, we need to get it right.
Did you say Ms. Vaughn could present three or four different scenarios on how to divide that?
On the magisterial. Voting, she can help us on that. That has to be, I think, a local decision.
Would there be any way of the commission entertaining that where we could see that prior to those different options that she's going to present?
It's possible. I understand what you're asking. It's possible. It's according to when she gets it to us, and what timeframe and those kinds of things.
I mean, you know, if she submits three or four different scenarios on how to slice the county, you know, it'd be nice, I think, if we could sit down and look at all of those.
Right.
If possible.
Yeah, right.
And the newspaper could publish them all, too, so, I mean, for people to get to vote.
Yes. In the video, I remember her speaking about areas of interest. I can't remember whether she was talking about voting precincts or magisterial districts. Do you remember? Do you think it would be appropriate for both to consider the areas of interest of people, such as, the way I understood it, you know, which road they use, and where they go, and I'm just trying to remember what she said on the video together. Do you think it'd be appropriate to consider in both magisterial?
Well, I guess that's what I was, not in the magisterial, but I did think so in the voting. I thought that's, that's where I was coming from with the, trying to get, not letting a, a community be divided by a road or a river, or try to get it together as a voting community. But now, the magisterial, I didn't, I guess I looked at that as more of just a, a way of dividing the county without getting into trying to worry about a community, but I just not want to see that line, you know, separate a community. I think we do have to watch about that as far as, you know, just for people, whether to be on a committee, or some office, or whatever. Then you can't, you go, I think we'd have to look at that. But I assume, and maybe assuming too much, but as much as she's done this, I would think that she will have some questions to ask before she starts trying to plot. I, I mean, I believe she will, because she's seen all of the situation and almost anticipates what you're going to ask her. I'm just thankful every day that Kenau County hooked me up with Joe Vaughn. I would hate to be trying to do this with a surveyor out here and some people and trying to get it done. I don't. I don't know what, how you could do it very well. I mean, I started all right before we got hooked, looking at how they did it before, and trying to read each of those precincts, and, you know, basically, each one of them spelled out by that surveyor, where the boundaries are and all that. So once I talked to Joe Vaughn, I laid that twenty-some page or thirty pages down. I keep it as a reference, but haven't worried as much about it since I've really hooked up with her. But that's, you know, that's what we're paying her for. But she's, I think it's thirty-five hundred dollars contract, and I think it'll work as top we get to.
What is your best guess on her having these scenarios?
Well, what we have told her from the get-go is that we would like to have this thing wrapped up by September if we can. So that means August is going to be a busy month. But she doesn't think we can get it done with that, that quick. But that's what we've talked out from the early goings, that we'd like to have it done. And she said, well, you're close, because you've got to have it done by October. You've got to have everything done before you get into the next election, the two-twelve election. So as soon as this meeting's over, my plan is to get with her and meet next week, and as soon as she's going to be through up there. And even if I have to meet weekends, I plan to meet and be able to come back to the commission and talk about what we've learned, or send them emails or something, here's what we got, and.
Thomas, she comes up with multiple scenarios, whether that's Thomas and I with Anna.
Yes, yes, yes. Or anything she comes up with, I think I'd need to share that with you all, because the turnaround's going to be fast.
I'd like to ask Thomas, since you're from the Harts area, and we're the local police now, people, do you, what's your ideas on the redistricting?
Well, I just, whatever happens, I want to make sure that Harts, Laurel Hill, Washington, no matter what area, continues being represented by committee people. And I want to make sure that we keep the precincts as close to where people can access them as possible. I haven't started cutting up a map or anything. I'm going to wait till Joe Vaughn gives me some maps and some recommendations first, just to see where she is, because I don't want to come up with some figure and some map of something that's not even possible. But I've looked at Harts. But I, I've looked at Harts, Big Ugly mainly, trying to figure out how to clean up the precincts, and I realized by moving some of the Big Ugly voters from the Ferelsburg precinct back over to Big Ugly itself, we're going to lose some people to Laurel Hill. But I think it's important to do that, because the people that are registered at Ferelsburg from Big Ugly, I don't think very many vote right now.
That was, that was another question I had. Since these changes occurred in eighty-six, has the actual voting percentage went up or down in Lincoln County? The voter, you know?
I, I don't have that information, I don't know that, maybe there, I haven't seen anything like that.
I would, I would...
Well, it's pretty low, I mean, I know that.
I would say down, because if you look at the national, national trend overall, less people are participating, which is a sad, sad reality, but if there's things we can do to increase that, I hope we have to do it. And I know we will.
And when we get into this, you know, Donald's office, Detective Christie's going to play a major role in trying to help us look at these voting areas and how to make sure we don't overstep our bounds on that, so. It won't be just the commission done, we've got to have whatever information we can get from their office to make sure we get things done as proper as we can.
I will say one thing that I have thought about after the last meeting, actually, when Versi spoke and talked about how the Jefferson District, she was saying that it was, if it was still a standalone district, which, which it's not, but she was saying if it was, that that district had not been represented in X number of years. So, I've thought in terms of if we had three districts, then every district would be represented at all times, so they would have someone to go to that they could see as their particular commissioner.
Yeah.
When you suggested September, you said, we're going to rack it up in September, you mean the first and the end?
Well, I just said that, I, I know, by the end of September.
By the end?
Yeah, that's, we have, I think we have to have a good time with that, because she said in order to meet the clock, we have to have it done sixty days, I believe is what she told me, prior to the January two-twelve, or end of December two-twelve, whether they will be able to start announcing, I think it's the first week of January, whatever. But everybody has to know at that juncture, the magisterial district division. That's the biggest play of the magisterial district, is for countywide offices. And the rest of it, I think we can figure out, and management, it's, I think it's the hardest part, is the voting part. But I think if, in, you know, it seems like we just need to look at it as carefully and cautious, I guess, without, you know, getting anybody to where they wouldn't come and vote. I think my desire is to try to figure out some way to make it better, but at the same time encourage people to vote. Of course, I'm still convinced that the way to get people to vote is to take the, do like we do the early voting, well, to their community and set it up early and give them a chance to come in and vote and things like that. If we can ever get to that juncture, hopefully maybe we can, but I just think, you can see, in the early voting, what percentage of people in the Carroll District vote early compared to the rest of the county. So, if you put that out in other parts of the county, I believe that districts would respond similarly, they'd come to vote. This gives them more chances, rather than just one day, they've got five days or so to come in and vote early, so. I think some juncture, we'll be sitting down talking about that, and what it would cost, give it dollars off and see what we might be able to do, but I think it needs to be looked at as we look at all this other stuff.
Just a ballpark, Phoebe, what does the early voting cost, over a dollar?
You know, you want to run two...
About ten thousand. That's with the programming, the machines.
But that's the full twenty days or whatever.
Yes, that's programming the poll book, the electronic poll book as well.
Because that, that's a great idea for an outline area.
But I think it would, it'd be worth trying, and if it didn't work, nothing says you've got to continue, but at least one election tried, one or two elections.
And if we do combine some precincts, but we don't necessarily say, for example, the ones at Harts, Aitenvale, Little Harts, Big Harts, would all come to the new school, you would save money, and that money could then be turned over to satellite vote.
Yeah, when I look at, I really hadn't looked at it as, as deeply and thoughtfully as I have recently, but some of this voting precincts just don't make any rhyme or reason to me why the lines were put where they did. At the time they done it, it made sense to somebody for some reason, but to me, when I look at it now, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But I think this is the time to address it, we've got the opportunity to begin a process, and we need to do that, and we will do that. Other comments? Be sure now if you've got something that you want to add with, put it in writing, just send it in, so we'll have it put with the notes and stuff, that's what we need, is comments. Look at the video, it may make you think of something else to add to it. Anything else for the good of the people of Lincoln County?
So, I, I did understand that, time permitting, you would entertain the public being able to review those scenarios she's going to present.
Yes, yes. I don't, I mean, that, that might shine a light on something though.
Yeah, I mean...
If we can get something out there where she can turn it around and get it to us that makes sense, then that's what we need to do. And I think the way to do that would be, although we may set a timeframe, here's the time we're putting on public review, we may have to check with her about what constitutes a change, where you have to start the thirty-day counter period, that's the only thing that would concern me. But again, I don't see where that is as tough as the issue with the magisterial as it is with the voting. The voting is the biggest concern I think. I was trying to think of anything else I had, I was supposed to say, but I can't think of anything else. If you think of something else, just put it in writing, I think is the best way to do it. When I first started this, I thought about it, said, well, you know, you know the phone number, call and let's talk about it, and I said, no, let's put it in writing, because whatever here and right now might not be exactly what you think I'm trying to get across to you, so put it in writing.
Do you want to add something?
Anything from you, Commissioner Vance? Anything else?
I just said, if anybody wants to get in touch with me about anything, they can do that.
Sure.
And, you know, I, I think we're on the, the right line with this, I do think that involving the public's important, because, and whoever to look at what, they may, you know, they may have, they may look at it from a, a position that we can't see from, so.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you're, the other commissioners are right, maybe we want to do what's best for the county within the confines of what we're trying to abide by, so. And I do appreciate everybody getting there, and I apologize for not being there personally tonight, but I, I do, I do think it's important that, that people have their input, and I appreciate the commission's willingness to do this for them.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing nothing, entertain a motion to adjourn this special session in County Commission. We stand adjourned at seven o'clock, we're not close to that.